All right. I have here we go. I call this border select meeting for the town of Vinyl Haven Wednesday, August eighteen twenty twenty one order. We'll call we have Leslie Dyer, we have Eric Gasparini, myself, and Ellie. Andy Doortown manager, Elizabeth Bunker, deputy town clerk, did I get that correct? Okay, sorry if I didn't say that last time, taking minutes. Number two, approve agenda. Do we have any additions, subtractions? None? Just started, come on in.
But try to find a seat.
I move we approve the agenda. All right, all those in favor? And the three approve the minutes from the July twenty seventh twenty twenty one. So moved and seconded in all those in favor. Number four, approved and signed treasurer's warrant number seven, so moved, second, all those in favor? The five communications. So we have one. Does everyone read it? Does anyone want to comment? Does anyone have any questions?
I did, I did correspond and have a couple of emails with the gentleman, so. I followed up on it, doesn't think at this point require any follow up, we just wanted the board to have a copy of it.
Okay, we acknowledge receipt of the letter. Any other communications? No. Move on to number six, speakers from the floor. Speakers from the floor. Going once, going twice. Move on to seven, seven A. Under committee and department reports, appointments, a animal control and harbor master report. Any questions, comments? That mooring was removed. The one, this very service was. All right. Seven B, road commissioner report.
Last time I met both our small dump in our pickup with the shop, pick up truck back. And the code cleared on the way to the other garage, we had them take it for a second, we need someone else. Oh, we are, they still went and talked to them about it and they said, yeah, just diesel engine, you can't out there, you can't run it. I said, run it hot enough, long enough to clean it out, so best thing you can do is put treatment in every time you fill it up or close to it. Like to come to the mainland once a month or so to. Get somewhere where you can light it a little harder.
Which isn't really a solution that was practical.
I think we're still looking to get the gas, the next one, right? I guess it's gonna have to be, yeah, what we're gonna have to do.
It's can't, every month, one, one day a month, we can't have a town crew going for arriving route one.
Well, that's what, that's what Rockland Ford dealer was doing most of the time, took it there.
Well, really, they were just driving.
Built to be able to kind of clean themselves out.
Right.
We just can't do it out here, so not without getting.
Nobody, nobody wants.
Only thing we haven't tried and it could possibly work is to weight it and force it into a low gear. And drive it, you know, with the RPMs up a little bit more with, with the weight in it, like put it in like first or second gear. We could try to ask if that works next time. If it goes in the limp mode, then we're locked in at five miles an hour. At least there's an indication that it's heading there. Yeah, I think about forty miles before you go there.
It warned you.
Questions about work?
No, but thanks to them for picking up anything I asked about removing signs.
Nothing else on road commissioner will move on to seven C, sea level rise committee. For yours.
So I believe you will receive a letter from the committee and an outline of the where we're looking for help with Gabe for the next. And now that Gabe is no longer part of this committee officially, you'll, you should expect to see, I think at every meeting. Certainly everything, at any meeting where you're looking for updates from us, somebody from the sea level rise committee will come or in pairs or anyway, that's how we know it. We're happy to answer any questions you might have about the documents you received or.
I think guys.
And I'm gonna introduce myself to you because I don't know a couple of people. New faces and some missing, I think, I'm not sure. So I'm Marion Grogan, I'm on the committee, but I live off island, so you probably don't see me around here much. And I'm here, I play a long time in the summer and I come during the year when I can, when I'm alone. You know, we have things, because I'm very active in the committee. And you know, well, no, obviously, yeah.
So who do you not know? Leslie Dyer?
Leslie, oh, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. And Jake, Jake is not here.
And is Phil still on the?
I think you guys are doing a good job.
Well, I think we, and we very much appreciate your support, you know, I think every time we've come to you, we commit with. Thank you very much and go forward and, and that kind of thing, and that's really important.
Absolutely.
We're all very committed to this.
I'd also like to thank you for your work over the years and for this plan, but you know, the second part of your letter here about your concern about the broadband. So I think there is been a misnomer that, you know, that this board was in full support of that project, but it wasn't necessarily the case. We wanted to get community engagement and, you know, it might come down to if the community says we're not interested in that project, then. You know, you, we are bound by our voters and, you know, so that could, that could happen. I hope it doesn't. You know, I hope that we can reach a solution to a problem that hasn't, you know, moderate a level, level of agreement, but it might happen. The other way, it could happen and it might happen in a heartbreaking fashion, it might happen last minute. You know, but so, you know, I don't want you to. Hold it, I guess personally, like, you know, if that were to happen. We don't have unlimited power.
As much as Erica would like.
So I'm, I'm not sure if I missed something, are you saying that it's possible that someone could say something to sea level rise committee?
It gave what it could have, you know, for it, you know, when we make a budget request at town meeting. That could get voted out. I mean, eventually, you know, the money right here in this plan is of a nominal amount of money, of course, and a lot of this offset by grants. And there's money set aside in the budget for Gabe's work for this current fiscal year, but eventually. You know, a much larger project is likely going to be proposed and it might be fifty. Yeah, I mean.
For sure.
Yeah, right, you know, this, you know, these are, these are first steps, you know, and that might not, you know, the community might say. No, it might, it might happen, you know, at a town meeting, it might happen.
So, you know, we brought, there is an option with broadband, you can say, yes, okay, we're not gonna do broadband, maybe something else will come along. With sea level rise, we don't have an option, this is happening, it is going to impact our committee, yes, the community could say. No, we don't want to try to raise the money and get grants or whatever to whatever it is that has to happen, but I hope we will have the board's support in saying, wait, this is really a foolish. Decision on your part because the cost of inaction far exceeds the cost of action and mitigation.
I was, yes, I think with broadband, it was more of a. It would be nice to have, and I'm more on the camp of, I think it was important for us actually to invest in it, because I feel it's. Should be a utility that we all need going forward, but a lot of people didn't agree with that. That being said, I agree, sea level rise, you can't get away from it, so it's something we're gonna have to invest in, whether, whether there's some like it or not. It's a reality we all have to face, so it's not a nice to have, it's a, we're gonna have to have this, so we do need the work from the committee. To set us up so that we can go forward at this, the best possible way and hopefully, you know, the least cost to all of us. Obviously, that's what we all want, so.
Agreed, yes.
Hopefully for those that, you know, just to clarify, if, if they aren't aware, haven't been aware of. The ongoing work that the committee's been doing over the last four, five years now, this isn't the first steps of the community's engagement to the horizon, this is just more steps.
Yes, I, I, I don't mean to say first step, but these are still very, in a very long term project, these are still preliminary. You know.
The first of many.
Yeah.
Yes.
But, but I think we also just wanted to emphasize that. And I don't know about what game it's done on the level three, but on this committee, she's been a really key player. And one of her biggest roles was reaching out to other organizations on the coast and developing relationships with those people. And they're really good and we just wanna keep it that way because we are both, you know, we rely on these other organizations. Help us think about what we're doing, what was fun, what we're doing and so on, so.
And not only that, the fact that we are one of the first communities, coastal communities to have implemented some. Form of action, whether it be just forming the committees and planning ahead, so which was my understanding is gonna be to our advantage and. Coming up with maybe grant money and stuff in the future. We're seen as a leader. Yeah, so I think it's important, yeah, absolutely, we need to, need to support you hundred percent.
Yeah, and I would say this board right now and. The board before was behind you and we still are, so. But the only thing I will say with Eric's point, it is ultimately gonna be up to putting it to the community. We don't have final say, it's up to the community to decide on that, but we will support you, so. Don't, don't have concerns about that.
So I, yes, so do you need a motion to, for us to actually contract with Gabe or can it without, will this fall under? Daily operation, Andy, and you can.
I think the biggest thing is just you, the board being aware of the work plan ahead and just kind of endorsing the work plan and.
Yeah.
You know, there's few, there's few options at the moment, you know, anyways, so I mean, the, the most logic solution is to work with who knows the best, so. Yes, as you pointed out, a good chunk of the. Good chunk of it, almost half of it is.
Yeah, right, yeah, and yeah.
And we had a budget set up, this was part of the work product anyways, and we did look at the budget and it was approved, so it's not strange, something new, it's just. Not as, you know, we don't necessarily have it set up where we anticipated at town meetings, so. But all the, all the work that's happening is some, is all stuff that was projected in, in the work plan and it's, just making sure that there's support there to move forward.
Yes, there is. Anything else you want to ask us or?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you want.
I'm not, we're breezing through this agenda.
Don't worry, we'll find something.
No business, all right. All right, we will move on, eight old business, nothing. All right, good, so we'll move on to new business, nine A authorized sewer pump station control placement.
And this is what we discussed at a previous meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're in the, we're in the. The work plan, but when we presented the budget, this is one of the capital needs we had, and they've been continuing to. Manually pump like almost daily, the pump station on Chestnut, because they've taken it out of the O's, so. We are down one and we would like to get that put back in, this would be one of the new controls and going in and we need to kind of. Start to do that on all of them, because they're now fifteen plus year old computers, so. This would be the price of one plus, plus the ferry. This is any potential overtime, they're pretty certain they can do it, we've seen the first and last both.
I hope so, looking at the overtime.
Yeah.
But they should be able to.
I think with the first one, we'll get a good sense, you know, maybe they could do two in a day next time if they need to do it, if they need to do it.
Right.
But we need to get one more put back in place, so. And this would be coming out of the, if I remember correctly, out of the reserve funds that were kind of set up for the sewer. We appropriated fifty thousand for the, in the budget for the sewer reserve.
And they're gonna start work immediately? I'm just saying, because they have this per March twenty twenty one ferry schedule, so.
Right, yeah, they plan to do it in the off peak.
Okay.
So that'll be, is it middle of September or middle of October?
I think it's middle of September, right? Right, that's when we change over.
And we'll have like a month and a half or almost two months.
Is October first?
That's what they were looking at, they were using those rates, the off peak rate.
Yeah, okay, or then late March, definitely.
But that's when the ferry schedule switches back too, right?
Yeah, right, that's when we can.
There won't be a four thirty. End of February.
They go to three fifteen in November?
Yeah, whenever the time changes.
We have about a month, so hopefully they can get it in October and there definitely won't be an issue with the.
I move approval of this quote, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Nine B, capital project work orders. Me, one, am I supposed to say B I? Work order ten, transfer station, final design and construction end.
So this, if we're gonna have the, the transfer station improvements done before next summer, we need to get them moving on this work. And we have authorized up to a certain amount at town meeting to have that done, we're not locked in any particular design yet. And but they'll need to finalize that pretty quick, and so we sign, approve this work order. The only thing I'm remembering, we may need to wait for the next meeting, we have not, so the A and E, these fees should be coming out of the project total cost that was approved. And if you remember when we had the. Garage and. Rich projects, we started implementing these before we got the loan, but we had to have a warrant article or an article at town at a select meeting to. Acknowledge that we're starting to approve and take almost costs. Some, and we probably should maybe wait on this one two more weeks. And I'll get that, I'm not, I mean, at this point, I don't think we want to go take the loan out yet.
No, yeah.
But in order to get to start and take in this hundred grand against the loan, I think we need that one, not warrant, but the article, pretty good approval.
Okay.
Or the motion rather.
So should we table all these?
I would just do this.
Just number ten?
Yeah, I think the other ones are already ones that we had budgeted coming out of operating. Except for the last one. I'll table this one till.
All right, so we'll table work order ten to the next meeting. Move on to cap, nine B to work order eleven, high street sidewalks, design and bid documents.
This is one that they had given us for the budget process, we knew the number was. Originally, because the prices were higher than I was guessing, but this is to start to work on designing drainage solutions, sidewalk solutions. For the whole high street sidewalk system. And that would give us, get us all the way to the point where there's construction. Documents basically to go out to bid. Cost estimate.
Seventeen five. That's for everything.
Right.
These three phases. Okay.
Sorry, construction and bidding not part of this process, so it's all the. All the preliminary design costs.
Construction document.
Bidding services with something that is to be added later.
All right, so.
So it's not, it is.
It's really just phase.
Preliminary design, get some surveyors out here, take some readings, figure out what we can do for solutions. You know, I think our biggest challenge is the width of the sidewalks that exist today, maybe at least probably too wide in places.
Really?
And the drainage solutions need to, we need to have better drainage solutions.
Okay. It's gonna be a project, right?
Yeah, the good news, there's, there's, you know, for through traffic is way around at least and.
Right.
When that happens, but we know it's a long overdue, it's been needed, it's been on your radar for a few years now.
Yeah.
We did budget for this amount in there to go forward, so.
Just see what, then we, we need to, we need to see what. It is, you know, we. We at least, at least we'll have an answer.
On what, yeah, what the whole project requires is for an idea, yeah, okay. To devious to make a motion to move forward with this. All right, I move we approve work order, work order number eleven. Seconded by Eric, all those in favor? Nine B three, work order twelve, North Haven Road vinyl co preliminary assessment cost, coast wise, excuse me.
So this is one that we had received some grant funds for, this is to look at the, the culvert. By the chapel and the impact it has on the water level coming into the cove there. Which between the water coming in and the subsiding of the section of North Haven Road through the meadow there. And causes, as you know, flooding at high tides with the monthly high tides. And so when we applied for this, it was pretty straightforward, some engineering work, and then the main coastal program came back, said, actually, we have this coast wise program that. Helps communities kind of identify and assess and work through specific sea level rise type scenarios and, and look at projects with that, through that lens. Which is aligned with what, you know, this committee and this board's been interested in looking at. And so they're gonna pay, have it partly funded through same amount, but funded through kind of a different program within this, within the coastal program. Implement this coastwise, so the original amount we had, we'd gotten this amount too for the budget process, it was, I think, twenty seven, five. Or twenty nine thousand rather, and to have them look through all this, and give us some alternates. And then when the coastwise layer was added, we had them look at the scope of work that was gonna be needed, there's gonna be a lot more stakeholder engagement. That's one of the processes that has to be kind of added to that, is to engage all the. Butters of, of the air, the project area, nice thing about this one is it's not a lot of property, not a lot of property owners. And so that's good, if we're looking at Main Street, for example, coast wise, it'd be a much bigger engagement process and. So that, I think this is a good project to try and, try and apply that and look to use that coastwise model with. And, you know, and I think to my understanding, I don't know what the increase in funding would be, but they are willing to look at the. Original funding amounts and increase the funding, given that we are implementing this and there is a little bit higher cost, so it's now thirty seven thousand five hundred. To have the engineers work with us, there's more surveying, there's more. Have to do more, more field work upfront, take more transects, take more readings, and then again, that community engagement piece with those property owners. Engage them a little more, so. With that, it was now thirty seven thousand five hundred, I did send in. If I hadn't already, again today, the new costs, and they did acknowledge they'd be willing to offset it, I think previously it was gonna be seventy five percent offset. I'm hoping they do another seventy five percent with this new addition, so that if they do, that would put us just over nine thousand dollars, ninety three hundred, ninety two seventy five perhaps. And for our share.
And you put a placeholder and pretend that's involved, right, in the budget work.
Twenty nine.
Oh, yes, we have more than, we almost have.
We were, we were prepared, we were gonna apply for the grant, we had the time, but we didn't know if we had gotten it, so we were prepared to pay for it, because we know we need something. So we were prepared to pay for it, but the grant's gonna help offset that and then maybe allow us to do one of the other work orders with. And they extended the timeline, it was gonna have to be done by the end of this calendar year.
Oh.
So with this expanded scope, and the engineers looked at it again, like, they were willing to push it into the next calendar year for finish time, so. We're still hopeful that we can have something before the budget process.
Move we approve record of twelve. Any discussion? All those in favor? Nine B. Four. Work order thirteen, public safety building truck bay assessment.
Mark shared with you during the budget process, the next truck that'll need to be replaced or certainly should be replaced, and perhaps as soon as next year. Or willing. It's currently a twenty four foot truck and the kind of standard length now for that replacement vehicle is twenty eight feet. Unless you custom order it, our understanding, custom order, any, any size truck, a custom order starts, you know, adds at least a hundred grand. To the truck cost. Right. And so we need to modify the bay, you know, at least one bay. And so I'd ask the engineers to, you know, again, we wanna have this before the budget process. Give us an estimate for them to look at and figure out how to modify it, you know, at, 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 at a minimum. We would bring out that bay closest to the entry door. Where the three parking spots are there, that's the, that's the vehicle, you can't go back, you could go back. One option, mechanical rooms and behind that bay, so if you want, if we wanted to push the mechanical room to the exterior wall. And gain more depth there, you could, but now you've got to remove all your systems, your heating and. Also the hot water heater, the heating system, there's a floor drain in there. That you'd have to, you know, presumably come up with a new drainage solution, all the wiring, electrical HVAC, I mean, it was just. Probably spend that in those speeds alone, they figured without adding anything on the backside. And so that's one option potentially, the other is to come forward, we don't have those systems and, and bring one bay out. And another six feet or so. And then, and they'd still be able to pull the truck out on the apron and still not be in the road, so that's, that's a possibility. The other is to bring all, all three bays out six feet, so you don't have just, we'd have a kind of a interesting looking building if we. Yeah, that one bay out, not the other ones.
If we're gonna, we're gonna have to change the length of the bay, might as well do all three, right?
That's another option, I think.
Eventually those other two get replaced too, right?
Yeah, those bays are a little deeper, because they don't have the mechanical room there.
Okay.
If you bring the whole front of those three bays out, just a little bit further, you're gonna gain some storage in the backend, which would be a, also a good thing to do. If you haven't had a chance to walk in through there when trucks are in there, by all means, go take a look, it's. It, it works, but it is certainly tight, and if the trucks in the future are any bigger, then you have to do it eventually anyways.
I would think would probably be more cost effective to do all three.
Well, yeah, I mean, by doing just one and then having to do two later or one later. Yeah, why not just get it all done at once? But.
So is.
Scenarios with us presumably and kind of come up with the best option.
Okay, they're gonna go.
Process to miss it.
They're gonna go through all those, okay, good.
And the only thing that's not included in here that I wanted to throw out and would require a change in the cost, but. We have obviously some housing challenges, we have a contract with the sheriffs that obligates us to provide housing for deputies, deputies, if we ever do a second one. And, you know, and if we're gonna go through this consideration, they're gonna look at the trusses and the roof support to extend it, do we want to. Have the engineers at least look at the cost for putting at least apartments upstairs. That we'd have, there'd be ours, our control guaranteed housing for deputy.
Might as well.
And, you know, in the future, if you had needs for per diem paramedics, for example, you'd have the ability or someone coming out for training to support them.
The real.
You know, we'd have, have something there, but you're gonna have to have someone else.
That would be, if you, if you can provide housing, you know, you have to take borrow money, obviously, to build it, but if you're not paying. But if you're not paying rent to rent a house for your deputy, you gotta take care of an awful lot of that borrowing payment.
Yeah, I think.
And, and you know you have it, you don't have to constantly look.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think right now, we budget about seventeen thousand, I think seventeen five for each deputy for housing allowance.
Yeah, for money.
Um, so if we have to, it's already in the budget, we have to, I mean, thirty five thousand dollars a year. Um, already being budgeted to provide housing and that's not, no. I mean, if, if they were to say, hey, we got a second one today, you know, we just found someone to move out in three weeks to start.
There's no way we can find.
You know, so I think long term, and if we're gonna have to go through the. You know, the consideration of modifying the structure now anyways, you know, is it worth? I mean, at least get the number, time to cost, I'm gonna get the number for a work order, for them to design it. Um, but is that something you want me to entertain?
Yes, very much so.
Yeah, get the, get the numbers and then.
Yeah, right.
They're here anyway.
My, my concern would be that if. You raise it up, is that gonna? Obstruct someone's view from behind, I can't even think if there's someone behind it.
Um, that's. That's places behind it, but I mean, that's.
Alright, then yeah.
And, and it wouldn't presumably be any higher than the ambulance bay is now.
Okay.
That's got two.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whereas this is just kind of one, maybe one and a half.
Yeah, so. We want to prove the work order now, right, we want to amend it. For you to do that, do you need an emotion to do that, or should we approve it and have you?
I mean, if you wanna wait, if they can give me an updated number that includes the apartment piece, and then it would be one work order. We can either choose the one without it or the one with it, if the number's too high, we can.
Yep.
Now, the hope is with a public safety building and workforce housing and, you know, perhaps there's enough right words there. And it's kind of served the right purpose that, you know, the hope is that maybe some grant funds out there to help with housing piece, but that's, that's certainly well down the road.
Nine B five, work order fourteen, downtown improvements, field investigation.
This is the big one. This is the big one, um, I was hopeful. I mean, it was known, we knew what it was, you know, we knew what it was gonna be with the grant application process that we were submitting. Um, but yeah, this is the engineering services for the downtown project, including stormwater. The sewer and water main, not the sewer main, but some components of the sewer project elevated. Place in the water main. Main street sidewalk and road construction, so, I mean, it's all super nuts, if you will, on that project.
But it's, this does not include the ramp?
This particular one wouldn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the launch, the one from.
Right.
So, um, I was hopeful that you would know by today about.
That other.
EDA award?
Yeah.
I don't, yeah. Um, still working through some final stuff on that.
But we have been approved for a million.
The northern borders weren't gonna approve for, so the time, you know, how we think this matters, so, you know, we kind of applied for EDA, we applied for EDA first. And we showed that we had matching funds to, you know, if awarded, that we'd be able to match. Um, on one point eight million, and in order to get there was cash reserves. Um, the water district's commitment to update their, their water mains. Uh, it's a five hundred thousand dollar contribution towards this project.
Okay.
And then MDOT had given us six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars now, almost two years. Um, to put towards a match towards the one point eight, so. We, you know, need to stay focused on this one right now. Um, that was gonna do that award, and that project scope was for this work order.
Okay.
So we hear back from that one. Um, I mean, we still know we wanna do it, but if we don't get those funds. Then we've got a big question as to, do we pair stuff back, how do we as a community, you know, we're gonna have to go, they're asking community for. Um, authorization to borrow the money, you know, so that a lot hinges on this EDA application.
If we get the EDA, then we also get the money from the water district and from the main dot.
Okay.
Alright.
Um, the northern borders is, is, is kind of part of our Main Street project as we see it, but it was specifically, um, to help do the boat launch replacement. Um, parking lot improvements. And, um, it even, I believe, included the net factory site with the water district building component to try and help relocate them.
Okay.
Um, so that, that one, it's been awarded, uh, we have a year to provide the, the match to it, the matching funds. You know, but when we applied, you know, we are kind of looking at that as like, okay, these are the final pieces to this Main Street project, so. We need to, at this point, focus on EDA, we've talked to them, both entities, and they're aware of trying to bring all this together.
So we, but we think that's gonna be decided soon, hopefully by the next meeting.
Won't be by the next meeting.
Oh, alright.
And.
So when's the year deadline?
For, oh, uh, so it'll be roughly twelve months. From now.
Now.
Yeah. I don't know if it's from when we sign it or from when it was awarded, you know, and, you know, public notice went out that there was an award, so we haven't signed anything yet, so it's. Within, within two or three week window of a year.
I would assume this one's been signed.
Yeah. So, and they know, I mean, you know, it's been a pretty significant learning curve for our team to try and pull this together and. Um, for those that still have the hair, that's, you know, lost a little bit from, or turned more gray.
Or more, yeah.
Um, you know, and it's, it's been interesting, you know, there's a lot to try and make this work if we're not gonna, we're gonna get grant funds. Um, you know, we still have Representative Ingris. Your mark, uh, she took forward is our project is one of the ones that she took from the state, and as far as I know, it's as far as it could get without being approved. Next step started to get votes in the senate, the house, and be signed into law.
Okay.
Not, not our specifically, no, that, that package, so it's as far as it can go without being approved.
And that was almost one point two, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
As we speak right now.
More C span.
You know, so that, how all those, you know, timeline, let each of those match up, I mean, we aren't able to use. As we were thinking we could, and the way we applied in the timeline, we went, we wouldn't be able to use northern borders as a match to EBA without reapplying. EBA. We're, we're afraid to, at this point, right now, we're afraid to say we wanna reapply, because there's no guarantee of anything. There's no guarantee now of anything either, but, you know, we, we're, you know, we've gone pretty far in the process, and so. We're trying to weigh all that, and, and by the next meeting, we'll have a better sense of what we're doing, but we won't know. Getting what the awards are.
But hopefully by the first one in September.
No, no.
Alright.
We're putting a lot of work behind the scenes on it to try and make it work, so we can, you know, limit the. The impact of the community, we don't want to go out for a loan for any of this to get this done without loaning anything.
Yeah. That would be huge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
This one, we have to wait. Unfortunately.
So is this can, anticipated construction by May twenty twenty two, will that mess up any of our?
Yeah, depending on.
Funds or grants or anything.
So the only thing that we need, I need to follow up on with MDOT, because they extended it once, their award. Um, you know, whether they can extend it again, I don't, we have to have to ask.
It felt like they had, theirs was, we had to be started this year, right, or?
By March.
By March of this year?
Twenty two, yeah.
Of next year, okay.
Yeah, so within what, eight months?
Yeah, and what does start mean?
Just start.
So.
We could start just digging.
We dig up.
If you, if you and I go down in spade and.
Start digging.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, I, I told them to start, you know, as long as. As long as it's just start, you know, we can do that.
Alright.
You know, we, we got the tools to dig.
Okay.
The engineer even offered to come out with trouble himself.
Alright.
But, but yeah, so the timeline on, that they proposed there is gonna have to shift a little bit, you know, I don't know, we, we won't. I'm ninety five percent sure we won't know, we have to look first about.
Is that the, uh, discussion we were having today?
Yeah, but that's, you know, I'll.
No, it's not, nothing to do with what.
Alright. Well, I move, we approve work order number fourteen as presented.
No, this one, sorry.
This one's, we should hold off.
I was expecting that we would be able to do this.
So we're tabling three of the five, and we proved two, alright, thank you.
Wow, we made progress tonight, guys.
Oh, we really have, this is, we are starting to see years of work come to fruition.
I know, I know, I'm so excited with the vinyl coat. And our sleuth, Eric.
Yeah. I think, I think Jake had the right idea anyway, and probably save a lot of money. But I'm not gonna repeat that idea.
That's not.
Alright, nine is complete, move on to ten, report of town manager.
Um, so the. Mid Coast Economic Development District, um, you might recall, the county tax, the county pays the membership fees for all the towns in the county. Um, to be members of McCad, so they look for. Um, you know, someone from each community represent them at the, the board meetings, and so, you know, we do that, um, and I joined the executive committee. Um, and they're currently going through an executive director search. Um, so that's taken up a little bit of time lately to be involved, help be involved in that, um, after putting it out there. The job description and posting and, and interviews, multiple interviews with candidates, they decided to. Uh, perhaps it would be best to come back, take a step back, figure out what the communities are needing, because there was a, you know. Should we be more of a planning agency, should we be more of an economic development agency, you know, well, what are the, what are the communities that we're serving need? Um, there's a lot of smaller communities that don't have planners or economic development staff. Some of the bigger ones have both, um, and so it's kind of a range of needs, um, I think one of them even contracts. With McCad to have, um, someone in their town working as a planner. But then they're at McCad's disposal for, it's kind of like a, a shared position between the two, so there's, you know, each town is just so different. Um, I think it's a good time for them to do that, because I think some of the, they're now in year two of the county funding list. For every town, and there's some that haven't had much contact with them yet still. Um, so questions over, should the county continue to put the bill for everyone?
Right.
Um. And it's, it's. If, if, you know, if we were to go before, you know, if we were to go to them and become a member. It was based on population. And right now, the way it's set up is, um, we, the county pays, and then we pay back the county, well, the county tax bill is based on town valuation.
Not population.
So, you know, we'll prob, we probably pay a little bit more, um, doing it this way, but, um, you know, no matter how you slice it, the smaller towns, we still pay a small amount. So it's in bottom, it's still about how do they get, do they have benefit, so anyways, just an update on that, um. They've helped us mostly with the grant writing stuff, they've come out and done trainings for our planning board and planning commission before. Um, they started a review on, I don't know, Jordan, so it'd be, finds the show zones only. Give us some feedback on that, that we need to consider. Well, I feel like, you know, we're, we're, we've utilized them, I don't know if it's necessarily enough, but it's certainly more than a lot of the other ones feel. They need to find a good balance of staff that they have and being able to meet the community's needs, so. This is a good step to go on. Um, updating the legal front, um, the eighty K matter that, um, is in the court system now. Um, done some final inspections, um, you know, we'll proceed to his next steps to. Deal with that. Um. There was a thirty day window to comply and. To meet and see how it is and what we can agree on, if we can't come to an agreement on. Um, whether it was remedied or not, and whether we can agree on the, the potential fines and, and costs incurred, and, and. You know, after going in front of a judge, we can avoid all that, and.
So have you gone and inspected?
I have.
What's your opinion?
It's better.
Is it? Better is not remedied, though.
Better, um, they come a long way, so.
Okay.
Um, right now, it's a good, at this moment, it's a good working relationship to get to the right place.
Okay.
Um, you know, any potential court appearances wouldn't be scheduled until October, that's how far out they are, so.
Yeah.
And, you know, if at least between now and then, we can continue to work to get everything resolved and agreements can be made on whatever fines it might be, then. Um, the abatement appeal, um, with the state board, uh, the state board, um. Tax board had ruled that there was a lack of jurisdiction, um, the two tax years that, um, were being. Um, sought for an abatement were. Were committed before the tax exempt request, so there couldn't be an illegality. And, and the next thing is we're still waiting on the court to decide if their taxes and, most of taxation, so. Um, there, the attorneys are finalizing with Wes this week, the, um, the remand that you had to do. And. I think as of yesterday. I think it was, they, American Alan Foundation filed a motion in court, um, you know, bas, basically, they've done it before, basically saying that we're taking too long. So our hope is to have.
Things. But we, we mean the lawyers at this point, right, because Wes is so his proportions is, okay.
Alright. And, and there, and there's been efforts to, um, reach out to us from them to see if, if we'd be open to, um, negotiate.
Which they haven't proposed anything, right?
Nothing's been proposed, just, uh, uh, open invitation for a meeting.
Okay, because the last time we met, I didn't really feel anything came of it, right, like, there was nothing that they proposed that made sense to us, so.
They determine their ownership or pay the taxes.
So, I've, I mean, I've offered to entertain a meeting, um, if, and, and only if, at this point, if. Um, when Lord and a tenant and us can be at the table.
Yeah, I think it needs to be all three at this point, yeah.
So we're just waiting here back, but we might, we might be able to. Talk about something or, or not, but that's slowly moving forward still.
Okay.
I'm getting tired, like. Um, so they would, um.
Alright.
Currently with, with COVID, um, you know, for those that are following it, it is, um, August, and it's as. Was kind of forecasted, um, you know, there's a lot, there's a high transmission rate of COVID in Knox County. Most of the states in substantial are high. Um, the recommendation is no state of emergency from the, from the state of Maine anymore. Um, so they're just, at this point, must have changed last day or two. Um, still just heating, you know, suggesting we need CDC advice, um, which they're saying, if you're in a county, and they update it daily. If you're in a county of substantial or high transmission of COVID, that they recommend, um, anyone indoors and group gatherings indoors. People should be masked regardless of the vaccination status.
We shouldn't all be vet masked right now.
Right.
Good for them, the recommendation.
I will, I will, I will, no, I will, won't go to another public place, I won't attend meetings anymore, I'm done with my mask. If you're not vaccinated and you get sick. Oh, well.
Just the mask, so.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not wearing it anymore.
Good thing you're not at the medical center.
Yeah, well, there's a reason I don't work at the medical center. We still weren't asked people to wear them even before this, you know, downstairs, you know, meet, you know, in the, in the office, the library still has it in place, I'll still support them putting it in place in those facilities.
I'll attend remotely.
If that's what the staff is most comfortable with, it's not that big of a convenience when you're coming in for a five or ten minute transaction.
I agree. If you want to attend remotely, you can do that. But if the CDC is recommending we all wear masks, even if we are vaccinated. I'm not gonna say we shouldn't. But I'm not gonna tell anyone that they have to wear masks.
Oh, okay, in that case, I mean, if I'm just on motion, I mean. People can strongly encourage me, people strongly encourage me to do a lot of things in life.
I just hope we don't have to go back to the plexiglass. Cages, like, it's so hard to communicate, you can't, I couldn't see the screen, it was just awful, you know, a mask. It's one thing with those plexiglass things, please.
It's also forecasted in the next couple of weeks, cases should start dropping off, because as I say, it's running, it's, it's running, it's running, it's running out of people to infect. Between, between vaccinated people and people being infected.
I know the school's following it pretty closely, I think they're waiting, as they get this a little bit closer before they have a final determination, but it's pretty clear where that's headed. And, of course, any medical facility and, you know, EMS facilities, I think now are still required to.
Yeah.
And they're actually going, kind of stepping back, and you know, re-implementing, and I think any, any call we go on now. Um, and anticipation is that anytime someone's in our fire station is that they'll be expected to wear a mask. Um, and there was even, um, there were orders or, it wasn't necessarily an order, but. Um, the notice that came out last week, I think it was, that anyone in the medical field, dentist or EMS.
Mm-hmm.
Um, would be required, would be required to have vaccinations.
Right, is that gonna cause a, has, okay.
I, I checked, I think with us, I think we're.
Well, vaccine.
If we're not all. If we're not all there, we're pretty darn close.
Yeah, right, I. I agree with, I agree with the mandate, but I thought to myself, hopefully it doesn't cause a problem.
No, no comments. People quitting their jobs because they want to vaccinate, personal choice, but I.
Oh, I know, I just.
I agree.
Give up my livelihood because I don't want to get vaccinated.
Um, that's, that's what I had in there, um, there is an appeal, Board of Appeal meeting, um, Friday and to finalize the. Now, I think two month, uh, most appeal, um, that they had in front of them, um, were a, um. A dock, seasonal dock and rampant floats, um, that were permitted. So they've had the site, they've had the public hearing and they had thirty five days from the public hearing to. Make a decision and so they've got everything they, I think, hopefully like everything they feel they need, um, we. Um, tomorrow Knox County is holding a, um, Q and A about the. ARPA grant fund application process that they opened up, um, which we could apply if we want. Um, those are the COVID funds that are coming out to all counties and towns. We still haven't seen ours yet, the state still has most of the towns. But they're having that, so I'm enjoying that tomorrow just to try and learn, I think it's, our commissioner, I think, was calling the meeting, um. With the county and, and the district three towns. And then McHead meeting on the twenty sixth.
Thank you, Andy. Number eleven, reported members.
I just have one question, I had a couple of people ask about the swap shop, is there news on? If and when that's gonna be moved and opened?
Um, good question, I talked to Pat, um, periodically about it and I don't, um, it's a matter of kind of getting in there, you know. You can just need to coordinate to sweep it out, I think.
Cause I know.
There's a question. Yeah, I think there's a question about whether or not the, there's a way to contain the pigeons and keep them out.
Pigeons are living in there.
Um, I think when we were in out there every day, it wasn't as much of an issue, but, um, Mark had gone in to fill up one of the trucks the other day and. So there were quite a few.
You can put up, you can put up those pellets whenever it come off, right?
I think, I'm assuming an issue is we got some broken windows and some bad roofing and probably some holes up above, um, they're probably still getting into.
Someone must have a shock, they're with birds.
But other than that, I mean, if, if that's not gonna be an issue and if we can remedy that, um. Last I knew, it was just a matter of getting the floor broomed and trying to clean that floor off a little bit.
It was concrete? Well, that should be able to be hosed down and.
Yeah, probably the power broom.
Or whatever.
Yeah, but yeah, it can be closed, yeah.
It's not like it's.
Yeah.
Trying to help the dust.
Right, yeah.
But that, I mean, there's no reason that they can't, I mean, I know it's just a matter of, you know, she had asked about, um, Pat asked about, you know, was there other funds available to support that and. And they're pretty minimal, I think, so it wasn't gonna be, necessarily be a big issue, um, I think it's just getting together and.
So it'll be a while, probably.
I'd imagine at least two weeks.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, it's not bad.
But yeah, but presumably sooner rather than later because.
I know.
You know, and, you know, it shouldn't be, you know, we don't need to make it a Taj Mahal, we just.
Right.
Yeah, you know.
Well, it, and it only worked until it got.
Right, it's something, it's something going to be better than an old storage container.
Yeah.
You know?
That's true.
Pretty much no matter what you do, it's going to be a step up.
Yeah, I mean, things, we know things slow down a little bit once we get through August, so hopefully that'll help, I know they've been pretty busy with EMS stuff, as she still are acting.
I know.
Big thank you for her doing that.
So. If you're done, Pam.
Yes.
Um. Speaking of that factory building, now that it's, you know, obviously long term solution isn't for it to be a swap shop forever.
You know, just the ambulance bay. Right, what, is it the whole building that's gonna use the garage itself?
You're gonna use the garage itself, I mean, they're not gonna have the whole building, but the ambulance bay has some drainage.
Right.
From the light that goes right through it.
Oh, okay, that's what I was wondering what you're talking about, I understand now, okay, so it's gonna be in the da- in the first floor of the garage, okay, gotcha.
So. You know, obviously it's not, you know, I don't think anybody's thinking swap shop there for, for eternity. You know, is it time for us to, maybe we can put it on the next agenda, think about forming a committee. About what's going to come of that space, now that it's obviously not going, it isn't the town garage. Whether it's short term of, does it only have to come down and we, for a period of time, we have increased parking. And eventually may, you know, it was a lot of imaginary money and vivid imaginations, you know, maybe, you know, there, there is some sort of. Community center layer, I know that idea continues to get thrown out, but that is. A ways down the road and. As I said, with a lot of imaginary money, but, you know. At any rate, we might as well do something with that space and if it means increase parking because. Or no, and, and it's not, and it's not just summertime as vinyl haven, population has increased. You know?
So just.
Sorry, let out.
Whenever, whenever you plan for that site, you take C double lies into account.
Yes.
Cause you might, you're gonna have to elevate the building.
Yep.
Or have parking on the ground floor and whatever useful space up there.
Right.
So that certainly came into discussion when we were considering moving. Right, so you're very aware of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But yeah, right, but for sure, right, right now, we might be talking about what are we doing for the next couple of years.
Inside, inside skating rink. Swap shop might be a great short term solution while you figure out what. Yeah. What, what's gonna be doable on that site and where the funding's coming from.
Right, so I think, um, you know, in the short term, you know, you know, this Main Street project, all the, once all the funding comes together. And that is a go, and we start moving forward on that, we're gonna need. A lot of space near town to lay down material, organize, park, equipment.
Right.
Perhaps work as an office kind of space, um, you know, so I don't. Not saying it's not a bad thing to start talking about it, but if, if the timeline, in my mind, we might need to utilize that for the construction project.
Okay, and we utilize that building for that, yeah.
You know, in that short term, and so I don't know if you'd wanna start, you know, just right now with the committee, um, it's gonna be. Potentially two to three years before we're done with the mainstream.
No, that, that makes sense.
I would just say sometimes the committees, some committees take a while to come up with solutions, so as soon as you start, as soon as you have options to pick from.
My gut is telling me that there's going to be a wrecking ball in that building, you know, having a date, you know. I, this is my gut, I might be wrong, but that's my gut, is that regardless of what goes there, it's not going to be in that existing building. Might be same footprint, but not that existing building, that's my gut. And I, I'm sure there's assassins waiting from the outside right now, it's bleak, but.
Certainly without a lot of people, um, talk and discuss about what the use of that building, what they would like to see. Yeah, so I don't think finding, well, I would like to think that it would, we had to find enough people to form a committee.
No, I don't think, I don't think forming a committee would, it'll be the solution that will be there.
Don't, I'm not, no, I'm not on that committee.
And there's still an undivided interest in that lot and building with the water district.
Right, yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not, oh, I.
So we might wanna.
Very little of it is.
Yeah. Don't worry. Clarence, let me know all about it.
Yeah, we, we may wanna, you know, perhaps just go a little bit longer and kind of go down that, we'll wait till things, we figure out the grant funds and what, what we can and can't do, I mean. Yeah, part of, part of the grant project potentially could be helping relocate.
Yep.
Water district, um, so there is no more undivided interest as a possibility, you know, and then that might be something we might wanna. In the meantime, I think if we can get a swap shop going and get people to step in the building, then we, people, we'll start to see. I mean, it is a big building, but when you walk in there and realize that the second floor. Um, is only about ten feet wide by the front of the building and that most of the second floor is not there. That first floor goes right to the third and third floor is unusable.
Yeah.
Unaccessible.
Right. The building is a lot smaller, I would say.
You know, when you step in, you start to be able to look around a little bit more, so if we do a swap shop going, people could be in it. Um, maybe start to think about what else it could be.
Right.
You know, certainly, some people have asked, you know, where we are in the process and I said, oh, what would you want it to be, and I've gotten all sorts of, you know, suggestions, but. Um, I think we have a good opportunity to engage people now without necessarily getting a committee going, get people thinking about it and just take a step in there, look at it.
Yeah, we don't have to form a committee tomorrow or anything like that, I'm saying, there's no sense that's wait on forming committee. Too long because.
Right, it'll take a long time.
I wonder what the thought would be of, um. Com- uh, put in a second story on the sewer plant, would that be possible for water district office? Yeah.
Like by the frame.
I mean. You're gonna have to put us somewhere. So.
That'd be great if they. Combine in the one.
I mean, it would be perfect because even though we're not with two separate entities, still the employees work for both.
Yeah, you read it pretty closely, yeah.
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, main water, that would be good for the superintendent, his associate.
Right.
Just a thought.
I don't know, that's all I had, I'm glad you brought that up, Pam, because I would, I would have forgotten it.
Oh. I just wanted to bring up that we all have been invited Friday to the board. Of ICMS meeting at five o'clock at the church to discuss, um, Illinois Community Medical Services. And it's open to the public, so I can just throw them right up there.
Friday at five.
Friday at five. Yes, in the church.
Was there another meeting last week?
Yes.
How did that go?
Um, I think there were more questions than answers. And I thought there would be more people, um, so, but I think it was a good start. Would the minutes cap of the, uh, public? The questions that were written down will be in the wind tomorrow. And it's actually an insert so that you can take it out and bring it with you to the meeting. But there's, there are no, I mean, just the discussion wasn't recorded or minutes. I'm not sure, I know there was, I think it was FaceTime, or Face, you know, FaceTime Live, um, or Zoom. But I don't know if it was recorded. Yep. Um, that's an organizer. No, I thought they were gonna be minutes or something. I don't, somebody said that. I know they wrote the questions down and they'll be published tomorrow.
So the question on next month, you're taking time, correct?
Yeah, early.
Want to make sure you have enough time and then we're not scheduling something.
Yeah, so the seventh and fourteenth, um, those first two weeks, um, I'll be available. And the last two weeks of the month, I won't, presumably the, I have a whole lot to report on the, on the fifth of October.
Yeah.
That'll be probably the October twelfth.
So we're, we're scheduled to the thirtieth, is that correct?
I think so.
Next, uh, and two, yeah, just shy of two weeks and thirty, Monday the thirtieth is your next meeting.
And then, and regular scheduling back on the.
Fourteenth would be two weeks from now.
But that doesn't work for you, is that right?
Fourteenth would be fine.
Alright, the fourteenth would be fine. And then we would.
But the twenty eighth is.
So then we would meet maybe the twelfth of October, does that make sense?
Oh, wait that long for another meeting?
It'll be three weeks, right?
Yeah, I mean, I imagine I'll have a fair amount to catch up on on the fourth and the fifth.
What's that, Andy?
I'll probably have a lot to catch up on the fourth and the.
Yeah.
And I, that first week of October, I, I'm straight out would work anyway, so I would not.
So I might make for a little bit longer meeting, I'd be up till seven, seven thirty, but.
Is that okay with the board?
It's fine for me, I'm not the chairman, I'm not, this isn't my show, when in one, we're, we're all on the same board.
You do what you want. I'm making sure that the rest of the board agrees.
I have no life, so I'm available whenever. Planned on being here at some point in September, but that, so. I'll be here.
So the fourteenth, we will meet.
September fourteenth.
Yep, and then October twelve. Oh, and I did, uh, what I just thought of, we were scheduled to meet with North Haven Board again in September, right? Still planning on doing that?
You wanna do that in October?
Late October.
Um, where are we gonna meet, we were gonna try to do.
One over there and one over here.
We're gonna do a meeting here in the office, so what we're gonna do. Like a thing at Talbot Hall.
That's what it sounded like last time, so.
Well, I mean, presumably people wanna come, the meeting room is not very big, they have a smaller meeting room than we do.
Yeah.
So if the public would, would be attending that meeting up there.
Oh, I thought we were gonna do a separate meeting with their board just to discuss issues, but if not.
Well, it had, it had to be public meeting.
Oh, you're right.
Right, I imagine the po- folks in public would want to.
Yeah.
Hopefully attend, so.
Well.
Yes.
Would you reach out to their, the town manager to see if they still wanna do that and if. What their timeline looks like, we try to. Try to match up with ours.
Okay, give me the meeting times again for us, the fourteen.
And the twelve.
And then now gonna tell the twelve.
Yep, but don't, and don't forget August thirtieth.
Right, August thirtieth, September fourteenth. Right. October twelve.
Yep. Anyone else? I move adjourn. Three seconds, all those in favor? Thank you and good night.
Thank you.